Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to personally welcome, on behalf of the Board of Trustees here, I'd personally like to welcome all of y'all to our meeting. Just personally, I'd like to thank also, this is democracy at its finest here, where you have local community and district citizens coming to hear what's going on in their school and their district. So, thanks again for y'all coming and taking part of your day to join us for this meeting. So, let's get started. I'd like to welcome y'all for the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of East Central Independent School District on October 22nd, 2019. Ms. Barrientos, can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Del Brazil?
Present.
Victor Garza? James Mulkey?
Yeah.
Honig Presses?
Here.
Steve Bryant? Mr. President, we have a forum.
Thank you. Item two, prayer and pledge, Mr. Toscano?
Yes, sir. We have our principal, Oak Crest Elementary School, Ms. Barnes, and some fantastic staff and students for our prayer and pledge.
Good evening, Mr. Toscano, Mr. Massengill, and the school board. We have some of our fabulous students from Oak Crest Elementary School, and they are so excited to be here. We also have Mrs. Batiste, who is our fine arts teacher, who will facilitate the presentation for today. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and start out with our prayer.
Lord, as we gather around today at this meeting, we thank you for all of the teachers, leaders, and school board members in our district. We ask that you bless each campus and to always be in our midst. We ask that you guide us and protect us always. Today, help us to make decisions that will please you, will please to you. Help us to be able to discuss the matters at hand in reasonable way, and to be willing to give up having our own way. Let this meeting be productive and help us to keep you at the forefront of our minds as we do the work set before us. Amen.
Alright, now we will have our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Hola, 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 Texas. Te prometo letrar a ti. Texas, un estado ante Dios, único e indivisible.
Hey, the next song, we're gonna sing is Bate, Bate, Chocolate. Hey, skirt a hot chocolate. Bate, bate, 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 chocolate. Ahora en bate. Let's break it down. Uno, dos, tres, cha. Uno, dos, tres, cha. Uno, dos, tres, cha. Uno, dos, tres, cha. Bate, bate, chocolate. 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 Ahora en bate. Let's break it down. Uno, dos, tres, cha. Uno, dos, tres, cha. Uno, dos, tres, cha. Uno, dos, tres, cha. Yeah. And our final song is Goodbye, Dear Love. Goodbye, 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 everybody, goodbye. Goodbye, 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 everybody, goodbye. I'm gonna miss you, and you, and you, and you. I'll see you again, another day, in, in, in my day. Goodbye, 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 everybody, goodbye. Goodbye, 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 everybody, goodbye. I'm gonna miss you, and you, and you, and you. I'll see you again, another day, in, in, in my day. Goodbye, 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 everybody, goodbye. Goodbye, 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 everybody, goodbye. Goodbye, goodbye, goodbye.
Alright, so I just wanna take some time to recognize if we have any staff members from Oak Crest, any parents, please stand up if any of these students are yours. We wanna recognize you, thank you so much. They did an awesome job. And as a school board, we have a token of appreciation for y'all. One of the things that we wanted you to know is that our pre-K students, they did help decorate the bags for you. And so, y'all hold up one of the bags so they can see some of the materials that they use. So, we use a high-scope curriculum, and it encourages natural materials, searches dirt, pebbles, sticks, sand, and so, the kid, the gift bags this evening were decorated by the students with open-ended materials that the children are exposed to daily, so we hope that y'all enjoy that. Clap it out, they did hard, they worked hard. So, y'all wanna go ahead and present the gifts to the school board members.
Staff embarrassing scene.
Thank you, you're doing so good, thank you very much. Hey, big guy. How are you doing?
What did you do?
Oh, we had a crash back here. This is mine. You know, like, yeah, they were coming up this way, I'm moving for the other one. I'm surrounded, I'm surrounded. We're, I'm good, I'm good, as a matter of fact, I, I, this might go to somebody, mine. Oh, I have one, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes, and staff, and everybody here involved with these beautiful children, so thank you very much for getting this meeting started, it's a wonderful treat, thank you. Just give us a few more minutes, we're gonna have some awards and recognition, and if you bear with us a little bit, we'll, after awards and recognition, we'll take a short break. So, item three, awards and recognition.
Trustees, tonight, we're excited to recognize several employees from across the district, several campuses, and several departments. These employees have exemplified many of the behaviors that we value the most, and so we wanna bring attention to those employees this evening. Brandon?
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Toscano, and members of the board. I'm very happy to be here and privileged to give these awards out. So, we made a call for nominees, we got more than thirty nominations, and we narrowed it down to these five, and I'll call you up individually to receive this award for employee recognition. The first is Mrs. Sylvia Zamora. Mrs. Zamora is an exceptional teacher at Oak Crest, she always goes above and beyond, not just for her students, but for her school as well, so when Oak Crest needed to shift a teacher from fifth to fourth grade, she volunteered to make the switch. She went from teaching two subjects to teaching all subjects in a matter of days. Mrs. Zamora is a wonderful person, and I'm sure her coworkers and students appreciate her taking personal accountability, which is the value that she was awarded, for making sure all students are successful. Mrs. Zamora was nominated by Taylor Perez. Will Mrs. Zamora's family and friends please stand and be recognized? Alright, the next is Ms. Erica Jackson. Ms. Jackson, she exemplifies persistence, and that's the value she won the award for, as an employee of ECISD. As a teacher and a structural facilitator at Legacy Middle School, she took a leap from teaching high school math to adapting algebra curriculum for eighth graders, to guiding and cultivating a math team that works together to create a positive environment for kids, to orchestrating and leading tutorials weekly, that's a lot of stuff. She routinely mentors students, one-on-one, to help them realize that taking the next step in education is not only necessary for physical success, but personal betterment as well. Her infectious desire to support her students encourages other teachers to keep doing the good work it takes to exceed expectations. Mrs. Jackson is the walking, talking role model of what this district values in all areas. She was nominated by Megan Kincaid, and will her, Ms. Jackson's family and friends please stand and be recognized? Alright, next up, Heather Adams. Heather Adams is the definition of adaptability, which is what she won the award for. As she has taken on the role of overseeing textbooks for the district, she is an employee deserving of a gold star for adaptability by consistently taking responsibility to maximize success in a rapidly changing system. Due to all the changes with the textbook inventory, Mrs. Adams has worked long hours organizing, sorting, labeling, supporting, delivering, and training assistant principals and instructional assistants. With all the change in textbooks along the elementary campuses, she is a calming force, always serving as an example for others to follow. She has adapted and overcome any obstacles to ensure our inventory will be updated for our EC family. Mrs. Adams was nominated by Patricia Merlos. Will Mrs. Adams' family and friends please stand and be recognized? Next up, Mrs. Cassandra Peralis. Ms. Peralis has been a positive influence at Sinclair with the great amount of changes that have taken place on the campus for the past year and a half. She has ensured that the team that she leads is on board with the changes and the district initiatives, and always reminds her peers that we are doing what's best for kids. She has a great amount of content knowledge and not only leads her team successfully, but has also taken on the role as the family fun night coordinator. Family fun night, which is next, is it next Tuesday? Friday, Friday, oh, Friday. So, don't miss it. And spends countless additional hours to ensure the night goes off without a hitch. She exhibits exceptional performance in all areas, but is exceptionally worthy of a gold star recognition for adaptability. Ms. Peralis was nominated by Stacy Johnston. If Ms. Peralis, if her family and friends could please stand and be recognized. And last, but certainly not least, Mrs. Verna Knox. Mrs. Knox of our Transportation Department embodies our core value of teamwork, which is what she was awarded. Not only does she perform our duties as parts and records clerk, including processing work orders, ordering parts, and scheduling services for all district vehicles, she also goes above and beyond by assisting bus drivers and monitors with installing or repositioning child car seats, communicating and assisting dispatch with answering phones and radios, and she even drives a school bus route when needed, ensuring students are transported safely to and from a school in a timely manner. Mrs. Knox is all about teamwork and is always willing to assist others. She was nominated by John Ubers. Will Ms. Knox and friends and family please stand? Congratulations to all the award winners.
So, congratulations as well, well-earned and well-deserved. So, right now, we'll take a short break, so everybody that has parents of kids, they can go home and do homework, or get a good night's sleep, and is, just take a short break for about ten minutes, we'll come back at about seven o'clock. Thank you. Alright, I guess we're ready, back to, get ready to go. Item four, public comments, nobody signed up for public comments, so we'll move to item five, public hearing for campus targeted improvement plans. Public hearing for effectiveness accelerated instruction for high school students, would anybody like to speak on that subject? Nope, alright, we'll move on to item six, public hearing for campus targeted improvement plans. Would anybody like to speak on that subject? Come on, man, does anybody want to say anything? Alright, well, nobody wants to say anything for that, we'll move on to item seven, which is superintendent report, Mr. Toscano?
Sir, Mr. President, trustees, this time I'd like to call Jonathan Holbert up to the podium to discuss House Bill 1842 and some statutory requirements for second-year IR campuses. In addition to that, he'll be talking about our improvement planning process and give us an overview of some improvement plans within all of our campus plans.
Mr. Toscano, Mr. Massengill, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. So, like Mr. Toscano said, I'm gonna talk about House Bill 1842, but really, I think it doesn't make much sense unless we put it in the context of what we're talking about here. So, we're really talking about school improvement, and for TEA, they have two big types of plans that they want you to work on, so they do what they call a targeted improvement plan, or a TIP, which are the plans that we just heard about there and that you've got later in the agenda. And so, those are ones for campuses that have a rating that their state accountability requires them to make a plan, and so, two examples of that are if a campus is comprehensive, so it's a label that you might have comprehensive, and so Harmony was comprehensive last school year, and it takes two years for that label to be fully removed, so Harmony has a targeted improvement plan. And there's also, campuses rated improvement required, like Highland Forest and Legacy have a plan, and then the other thing that TEA makes you make a plan for are what they call turnaround plans. So, if you've been rated improvement required for two years, they make you make a plan going forward. And so, Highland Forest is in their second year of improvement required, so they have to make a turnaround plan that they would execute next school year. And so, that House Bill 1842 has you working on developing that plan that's part of it. They have what they call a required webinar, and I can only assume that they're not really clear what a webinar is, since it's just an eight-page PowerPoint that's included in your packet there, and I'm gonna hit some highlights from it for you. Okay, so, the turnaround, so the tips and the taps, those are the two big things that they talk about, and so, it's nice to sometimes put that into a little bit bigger context, so, they have us working on what they call the effective school framework, so that's some very effective practices that they've, that they have through research, so there's five big areas that they, that they encourage schools to work on. So, the first one is strong school leadership and planning, the second one is effective, well-supported teachers, the third one is positive school culture, the fourth one is high-quality curriculum, and the last one is effective instruction. And so, those are the big components, and last year, Legacy and Harmony went through an audit of the effective school framework, where we had Region 20 come in and go through and evaluate, they spent about a week going through the whole school, they, they observed everything from lunch to classrooms in action to dismissal at the end of the day, and they, they, they interview staff members from administrators to teachers, and based on the comprehensive evaluation, they make evaluations, they rate you on it, and they, they kinda collaborate with what areas to focus on, and so, I'm gonna come back to that in a little bit, but I wanted you to kinda see that it's rooted in really effective instruction. What they really want us to be doing is partnering teachers with campus administrators, central office, Region 20 and TEA, and so, you know, we've said before a couple times that we like a lot of the things in this process, because it says, use research, use stuff that's really effective, it says, you're stronger together, when we collaborate, we get different perspectives, we do a lot better work. And then, really, you're setting goals, you're monitoring those goals, and you're making adjustments as you go along, and so, this is something for years we've been, we've been taking and trying to grow and grow and grow and apply more and more throughout our organization, and so, if you get at the big, the big notes, I think, I think you'll see that they actually have some good ideas in there. So, but it's, to me, it's more than just the compliance with their system, so a couple quick examples, they have us start the work in September every school year, so in September, they started to roll out the new rules, and they said, oh, here's our new template, and here's new requirements, and here's new training, and here's new stuff, and, and that's all well and good, but we, we really start that work in the spring, and so, we, we have campuses begin to collect their data, they, they go through and they look at what's effective, and they start to lay things out, because if you're not budgeting in the spring, then, then you're not setting yourself up for success, and if you don't know what your key things you're gonna be working on are, then it's very difficult to change in September when the school year's already started and things are already in, in action. Another example is that they make campuses that have low ratings do this process, but we believe that everybody should be engaging in improvement process, constantly trying to get better and improve, and so, not only do we have every campus do that, and we've done that for years, but we have all the departments now doing that, so transportation, and bilingual, and food services, and everybody's engaged in a process like this, so it's kind of a unified system of improvement, trying to get really clear and partner and make, make great plans and set some goals and make adjustments as we go along. So, we're more than just about the compliance, and in doing so, we've told Region 20 about it, and they said, that's exactly what we hope people would do, and we told TEA about it, and I said, I'm sorry, we didn't wait for your rules, we, we took action, and they said, we, we always hope people would think about doing that, but nobody ever does that, and so, we're trying to do more than their minimum requirements and trying to get real value out of what we're doing, instead of just complying with their minimum, with their minimum actions in there, you must do this, or you better do that. Okay, so, the focus of the plan, so we talked about that effective school framework before, and when you really look at the, the plans from like Harmony, Highland Forest, and Legacy, it revolves around those last two pieces, so the high-quality curriculum and effective instruction are really the heart of what the, the audit said we should be working on last year, and what we think Highland Forest's audit this year is going to say. Actually, Friday at four o'clock, we're meeting to debrief Highland Forest's rating, because that's the, the, the next time that we could all be available to go through the full, the full audit, so we're gonna, we're gonna work on that Friday afternoon. But, so, to kinda get a little bit more specificity here, what we're really saying is, in those schools, we're trying to target things like great weekly plans, so knowing exactly what we're gonna be doing every week and every day, and then having frequent checks of understanding, so every campus engages in a nice weekly, weekly planning process where we put teachers together, and we have administrators collaborating with them and looking at the best resources, and trying to make great, great plans to take care of our kids, and then at the end, we also meet every week in a separate meeting to, to look at things and say, hey, how did the kids do, and which kids are really struggling, and what do we wanna do about that, and which kids learned everything that we wanted them to learn, and what are we gonna do about that? And then finally, what are we doing to improve our instruction and to get better, because it's about continually improving not just the kids, but ourselves and our craft, and so that's kinda the heart, and you'll see those pieces in a lot of the other plans as well, but I just kinda wanted to lift up those, those core pieces, and because we've put this all into our CG process that's so much bigger, we have all the campuses really working on all of that together, but just, it's kinda where you're putting your focus is the more important thing, and again, you'll see that in our targeted improvement plans at the end, and then you'll see that our campuses that don't And then um, you'll see that our, our campuses um, um, that don't have to do these plans, they embedded it in their campus improvement plans, and that, that's um, something that TEA said we could do. And so, um, you've already approved those last week. And so, um, it's the same, the same plans that we've already said, those are our improvement plans. And they said, it's very appropriate for a campus in that situation to embed it into their work. Okay, so wrapping things up, taking it back to House Bill eighteen forty-two. So um, it's really about campuses um, that are rated improvement required for the second year, and they have to create a turnaround plan. So Highland Forest is, in their second year, will be engaging in writing a turnaround plan. Um, and that, that's something we'll need to bring to the board probably in another month or two. Um, and then uh, um, it's uh, there's a couple of things that they want you to, to focus on. So they want us to, of course, talk about academic programs and what kinda things we're gonna be doing. And then uh, there's written public comments, and so we'll, we'll have another opportunity for people to comment on and, and uh, give feedback to us to make sure that we're getting as many stakeholders and as many perspectives as we can. And then we have to do some budgeting and saying, here's where we can put some resources and staffing. And then of course, they want board support. And all of this is, is really, um, while it's, it's a different presentation this year, it's the same requirements that they've had in the past. They, they didn't really change any of these components from what we went through a year ago with Legacy. It's the same, the same stuff. They just, um, they want you to be aware of penalties, and if you don't do thises, or if you, if you do that. And uh, you know, they, they take it from a punitive way and a, a compliance way. And we try to look at, how can we make ourselves better and stronger and take the next step? And so there's a little, little difference of philosophy at the core. And uh, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Uh, this one right here, sir? So you've got the, the, the plan at the end of the thing, but those, those are the five things that they, that they make you focus on, one of the, two, two of those things. Yes, so they say that these are things that research suggests are very effective, and so they want us to make those things the core of what we're doing. And for um, those three campuses, they've chosen the, the last two based on an audit that we did with their help, uh, based on their requirements. Uh, they're, uh, so if you look at the second bullet, Harmony, Highland Forest, and Legacy are focused on the high-quality curriculum and effective instruction. Those are the two core, core pieces that they're gonna dig into. Yeah, so part of what they do with strong leadership and planning is um, if they've got um, kinda specificity where it kinda goes through more and more detail. So one thing they do is having really clear roles and responsibilities for everybody. That's one of the things that they audit and that they go through, and I know when they- Yeah, yes, sir. Um, so one of the things that we did um, like uh, for Nicole, for example, last year, when they came in, they had us look at uh, the calendar and look at everybody on the team. And so making sure, and so for example, um, I'm on Legacy's instructional leadership team. So every week at their leadership meetings, I'm part of the team. And so, we go through everything together, and so they kinda keep me in the loop on everything that's going on. And so we try to partner up and make sure that we're offering really strong leadership together and that we're tackling problems and that uh, we kinda get that diverse, diversity of perspective. So they know what's going on day to day, and then I can bring in some research and some different perspectives. Oh, that's a great question. So what they're talking about here is um, through like a, a lens of, of a, a number of things. So first off, we're trying to recruit great people, that's one of the things that they specify. And then once you've, once you've said, hey, look, here's what I want, how do I select those people? And then once I've selected those people, how do I put them in the right spot? And then once I put them in the right spot, how do I bring them in and induct them to the system and say, hey, at this campus, this is how we do things, and East Central, this is how we do things? And then we know that staff retention is an issue. So it's kind of a fifth piece of that puzzle is, how do we hang on to those great people? And so, we, we try to help them uh, package data and stuff and trying to say, hey, look, who's been effective at what grade level and what subjects and what areas? And how do we make sure that we have diverse teams that are really agile and, and, and uh, bring a, a variety of strengths together to, to overcome? Yes, sir, thank you.
I was just gonna say, I just appreciate your enthusiasm, Mr. Holbert, you are really- But, but I do, I love the big picture part that you, you were sharing. I know we have, have the uh, written information, but just the, the big picture part and the everyone plans versus some plan. And it just kinda reminded of, of a few of us that went to that accountability um, workshop uh, a few months ago, that, you know, we're all in this together, and that's what I'm, I'm seeing that. And so we all are accountable, and we all have a part in, in this to make in the entire school. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? No, go. Uh, we'll move on to item B, departmental annual results me- measures.
Sir, Mr. President, trustees, in your electronic packet, you'll see child nutrition's annual results measures. Uh, I'm sorry, in your miscellaneous packet, in your electronic packet, you'll see the same thing for personnel, technology, child nutrition, transportation, custodial services, maintenance, and grounds. And as Mr. Holbert previously mentioned, the improvement planning process that campuses go through is the exact same process that every department goes through in our district. That is not TEA mandated, that is not required, but it's required of an organization that wants to continuously get better and to be transparent about where we currently are, what our priority, uh, uh, our opportunities and our priorities are, and that we ensure that we have systems in place um, to monitor the strategies that we say we're gonna utilize to, to hit the mark, to, to get better. And so, sorta like, exactly like campuses which have four priorities, if you, if you just kinda look with me at the child nutrition document, every department, you has the same four priority areas. And they, based on a comprehensive needs assessment, they determine some priorities and they set some annual goals. The first page is the annual goals uh, for child nutrition. But what I also wanted to show you is how we're monitoring that in real time, monitoring progress. The second sheet is a scorecard, it's an example of what every department and every campus has. So that when we say we have a goal or a set of goals, and we say we're gonna do some work to meet those goals, that we actually have systems for monitoring in real time the degree to which we are. You asked a question a minute ago, Mr. Moki, how we're supporting leadership. We have assigned every principal and executive coach from the administrative council, who meets with them regularly to help monitor the work they're doing and partner with them and ensuring that they have the support that they need, and that they're thinking carefully about the decisions they're making. Um, I meet with them bi-weekly on an average as well to kinda work with them and make sure that they have everything they need again, and then I'm partnering with them to make sure that they're making the best decisions possible. Um, and then as an administrative council, we meet with every principal every nine weeks, and we review their scorecard. And we essentially get a state of Sinclair and every campus. And we make some decisions about what we can do together to continue to move the work forward. And so it's a very comprehensive effort, this year's next level, uh, from where we've come before. And uh, we really believe that we're doing the right work systematically to ensure that the very best that we have to offer is replicated in every school, um, is provided for every leader, and ultimately allows every school and every department to elevate each and every year. In other words, continuously get better. So the scorecard, example, by Nov- November first, every department and every campus is gonna complete their signaling. So basically, all this is, is there's the goals, there's the things that we said, the strategies that we said we were gonna do to meet those goals, and then indicators of, as we monitor them, if it's green, we're tracking. If it's yellow, we gotta make some adjustments. If it's red, we're off track, we're not hitting the mark. And if it's white, we haven't even addressed it. So this is different than doing an autopsy at the end of the year. This is real-time reflection of where we're at, we're looking in the mirror constantly so that we can collectively make good decisions and hopefully the right adjustments, so we get the results we want. And I just wanted you guys to see that, again, every department of personnel, technology, child nutrition, transportation, custodial service, and maintenance is grounds, and grounds is there for you. Last month, month you approved all the campus um, annual results measures. And so, I just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight, talk a little bit about it. You'll get more and more familiar with this, this is our first year rolling it out in this way. Uh, we're learning together, but I think our, all of our collective conversations are continuously encouraging, uh, because it just seems so much more aligned, so much more clear, and, and we feel so much more capable to making the right decisions at the right time.
I'm gonna understand a little better what you said, thank you for clarifying-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any questions?
I just think it's a great idea, 'cause we always receive so much information late. And I, I think years ago, we were trying to, I'm just so excited that you guys put this together, because many years ago, we were trying to talk about a way we could do this, like, how can we're, how can we get things in real time? What are we actually doing right now? You know, and, and to see it finally come to fruition is really nice, and I know it helps everybody a lot. So I'm super proud of it, I'm really glad that we're able to see this. So, a lot of work, I'm sure, but it's really nice to see it. I wanna thank everybody.
It's a lot of work, but the work that this reflects is what we're actually doing today.
Right.
And I think that's the most important thing, yes, ma'am.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Uh, okay, we'll move on to item C, bilingual ESL department annual report and certification exemptions and waivers. Mr. Toscano?
Yes, sir, in your electronic, or in your miscellaneous packet, trustees, you have a slide deck. Looks like this. Our director of bilingual ESL programs, Dr. Almarosa Martinez, is going to give the board an overview of the state of our bilingual ESL programs. Uh, keep in mind that they're under construction. We consolidated our dual-language programs into two um, centers, right? And uh, we, uh, we committed to the community to bring that task force back together and ensure that we have quality implementation at the pre-K five level, but that we were also, also mindful of six to twelve implementation uh, to investigate what would be possible uh, in our efforts to continue to improve that program as well. Uh, she'll also talk a little bit about um, certification requirements, exemptions and waivers, uh, and what our plans are to continue to, to move that work forward. And so, before I completely use, lose my voice, Dr. Martinez, uh, our coordinator, Letitia Gadasen, our specialist uh, as well are here. This is our leadership team uh, that we're so proud of this year.
Thank you, Mr. Toscano, good evening, Mr. Massengill, members of the board and staffer East Central. Um, thank you for allowing us to share and supporting us the required documentation of chapter eighty-nine, twelve oh seven, which requires that we do share current bilingual and ESL program status to the board by November first, so we're meeting deadline. And we have prepared a brief PowerPoint that outlines some of the work that we as a bilingual ESL department have been and continue to work on. So I'm going to share with you some of the events that we have already occurred in our district. At the beginning of the school year, on August thirteenth, we had our first annual bilingual institute, in which all of our dual-language teachers, ESL middle school and high school, and LOTE teachers gathered at Salado Elementary. We had an opening um, uh, gathering in the cafeteria, and then teachers proceeded to go on to sessions that were tailored to their programs. So it was a very successful um, outcome of, of participation there. We also have had uh, working lunches with our campus administrators. Um, there's always a way to find, to meet the needs of our administrators, and we found that during lunch, if we met with them, we would have the opportunity to communicate with them as to what is going on with our programs um, here at East Central. We have also met with our task force. We were very happy to say, we're happy to say that we had eight members of our community attend. We had staff, uh, central office, Ms. Taffy, Ms., Ms. Shannon were there. And of course, our bilingual department came together. And we will, by the way, having our next, uh, having our next task force meeting on November fourth, which, November fifth, excuse me, which you all are invited to participate with us. We're looking forward to that meeting. Our theme this year is under construction, and it is literally, our building is under construction. As you all know, we are housed in a building that was going to be demolished. So we have a lot of work to do in our building, and then also as a department, because we're all new to uh, working together as a department. And Mr. Toscano, yes, I was going to introduce Leti and Beatriz, who are here with us um, today. Um, I don't want to miss the opportunity to thank Dr. Fuller, because she has been amazing support. And I always like to give credit where credit is due. So not only in guiding us, but in supporting us, it has been an amazing journey. So I wanted to make sure that I said that. And this is our department, obviously, I am the director. Letitia is our coordinator, Beatriz is our specialist. Simara is our Title III clerk, and I'll speak to you a little bit more about their roles. And then of course, we have Laura, who is our secretary. And I'm just gonna go back just to what Jonathan was sharing earlier, how we're being proactive, and what Mr. Toscano was saying, how are we supporting uh, our campuses? And this is evidence of how East Central has taken that effort, because as a dual-language program that continues to grow, we are aligning our roles and responsibilities in which we're saying, Leti, we support administrators, we support program facilitators, we support academic deans. And then of course, Beatriz, we're gonna support teachers, role, uh, model lessons, videotape lessons, let's come back, let's provide professional development. So it just leads perfectly to what we have been trying to do as a department. Um, so what does this mean from a bigger lens from us, for us? As the state of Texas, we have one million in, identified English learners. And this number continues to grow. Forty-seven percent of these English learners participate in bilingual programs, and forty-eight of these English learners participate in ESL programs, which we have here at East Central, both programs. Um, the majority of these English learners are Spanish-speaking. Some of the other prominent languages are Vietnamese, Arabic, uh, Urdu, Mandarin, and Chinese and Burmese. So what does this mean for us here at home at East Central? Well, we already have identified thirteen different languages here at our campus, I mean, at our district. A thousand four hundred of these students through our home language surveys have identified themselves as Spanish proficient. But some of the other languages, Filipino, Tagalog, Mandarin, Vietnamese, Arabic, and German are some of the other larger numbers that we have. And this was towards the beginning of the year, this could by now, based on PMS and, and new data, may have changed a little bit more. But this is where we stand, we have thirteen different languages represented here at East Central. So how do we meet the needs of this um, diverse population? We go back to our mission, and we're always focusing on the fact that we state that together we will continue to customize learning. We customize learning by the students' needs, by the teachers' needs, and by the expectations of our fast-growing um, community. These are the programs that we have to support our students, our language programs. We have a bilingual program that is a dual-language model. In grades Kinder through fifth, we have a two-way immersion. And in grades pre-K, we have one-way immersion, and we follow an eighty-twenty model. And I'll speak to that bottom piece in reference to content area at middle school and high school as we move on further. We have an ESL program, and based on the definition of the state, our ESL program at the elementary level is considered to be a content-based, which mainly means that the teacher is ESL certified and all of the students are in the same classroom. Uh, at the secondary level, in both middle school and high school, we have by definition of the state, an ESL pull-out program. And then we also have our, our LOTE programs, languages other than English, in which, because we don't have a dual-language at the secondary level, we still have a Spanish trajectory for our students that have participated at the elementary level to maintain that Spanish. And then of course, we also offer it as a foreign language for the students that need to acquire their, their high school credit in order to graduate. Also, under the LOTE programs, our American Sign Language. We are very fortunate to say that we have two teachers that are awesome teachers doing a great job with our American Sign Language. And I'm turning around looking for Mr. McKay, because they're awesome teachers. I just wanted to emphasize that. And then we also have, um, a computer science also falls under LOTE. And for that program, we have been working very closely with Dr. Holman, who um, has, is been very involved with, with those programs at the high school level. So, in order for us to maintain that um, communication with our community, we have created some brochures that we are uh, sharing with all of our community that define the programs that we offer here at East Central. So that we're very transparent, and everybody knows what kind of programs we have. These brochures are both in English and Spanish. So these are some of the brochures that we are sharing with all of our community, that's the inside part of it. And so, here is where we are at right now. Because we have a large growing number of population of English learners, and because we are struggling sometimes to find bilingual and ESL certified teachers, that is where we stand. So at the bilingual program, we have to write three exceptions. That means that three teachers are not fully bilingual certified, as by definition of the state, required by the state. And then for ESL, we will have to write twelve waivers at the elementary level, and then twelve waivers at the middle school um, level. But I just do wanna clarify that the minimum that the state requires for our secondary level is that our ELA- is that our ELAR teacher be ESL certified. So, because sometimes we don't have that in, in our ELAR middle school, that doesn't mean that our students are not receiving support. We have other support through our paraprofessionals. We have Avid at Heritage. We, we're finding other ways to support our students. So, I just want to clarify that. But we do have to report to the state that we need twelve teachers at the middle school level to become ESL certified. So, what are we doing to support that? We have to obviously set a plan for the state to say, how do we target this situation? And we've done so by providing professional development to all of our dual language teachers. We've set an expectation, together with administration and our coordinator and our specialist. And we've identified three strategies. Dictado focuses on writing and Lotalara focuses, focuses on reading and bridging, obviously, the word says in itself, how we bridge both languages. And we've set an expectation where these are the strategies that all of our dual language teachers are implementing in the classrooms. For our ESL program, we've identified also three strategies, language objectives, preview and review, and structured conversations. Which, by the way, I have plenty of research to back up these strategies if you need to be informed about these strategies. So, what we did is that we came together, identified, there's a lot of different ways to shelter instruction. There's so many programs out there. But we said, let's focus on three. Let's bring in and let's focus on these three strategies and let's make them uniform K through twelve. Everybody will be implementing these same strategies in our K through twelve ESL programs. We are also very happy to say that we now have a testing center. And we wanted to thank Dr. Dykstra. He's been very instrumental in helping, helping us accomplish this. So, what happens is that every student that comes to our district that's due to Texas or in pre-K kinder, has to fill out a home language survey. If any one of those questions, they ask several questions, three. If any one of those questions state a different language other than English, then they have to be tested. It's what we call the identification process. So, what we had in the past is that every schools was doing their own identification, their own testing. Well, we've not all brought it in. They come to our building. We've set up our center where Beatriz has been very instrumental. They all test. And then, based on the, of course, the outcome, the performance of the students, we identify them as to whether ESL, dual language, or they may not qualify. So, now, we're bringing all of that information together in one place. And that's the brochure that we've created. So, where there's no confusion as to what happens with our students. We've given these and shared these with our PMS coordinators at the campus levels. So, we all know what the process is for the identification process. Once that information is gathered, we have a system where once the students are tested, all of this information is placed into our EL pack. And Leti has been very instrumental with this. We're working very closely with our program facilitators so that there's no guess as to yes, no. There's a lot of coding involved. There's a lot of different levels of, of occurrences, things that need to happen in order for us to identify our students. So, Leti has been very instrumental with that happening. And then, we have Title III. We're very excited about our Title III. We have obviously a clerk, Simara. And Title III calls for parent, family and community involvement as part of our community. Region twenty offered to give ESL classes for adults. And the requirement was fifteen and we got twenty-five participants. So, our building is being used every Monday and Tuesday and adults are coming to our building to learn English. We're very happy and very proud of that. Tomorrow, we have our first family event at Salado. And we have approximately a hundred and twenty students. You all are more than welcome to be there. We're going to, the presentation is going to be all around read aloud. And we're going to coach our parents, support our parents, give them guidance as to how do you continue reading literacy development at home. Students are going to walk out with a book. And the title of the book is, The Many Things You Can Do With A Paleta. So, they're going to get a paleta as their snack. We have upcoming parent events that we're planning with high school where we want to educate our parents about the Tell Pass assessment and that language acquisition that we really need to target in, in our community. We've also been working with our instructional assistants, identifying their roles and responsibilities. We've met mainly with our elementary instructional assistants. And we are now moving forward to meeting with their middle school and high school. Not only identifying their roles and responsibilities, but also providing some sort of training and support so that they know how to support the students when they're going into the classrooms and, and with the teachers. One of the other things that we also want to share is that as part of our dual language, we will continue participating in the Span, Spelling Bee, which in the past, East Central has been very successful, very well represented. We will continue to have cultural art celebrations. And those are some of the ideas that when the campuses came together, Salado and Oak Crest came up with some of the ideas that they would like to continue celebrating. Here is what we are talking about in that year of study when I mentioned that we do not have dual language at the secondary level. We are hoping, and I've developed a plan in detail that I am going to share with Dr. Fuller in reference as to what we're hoping can be some of the future plans for our dual language program at the secondary level. And just very briefly, we're looking at maybe math and history, one or the other, and then fine arts, maybe choir, theater arts, journalism, to have some sort of, of partner-teacher program where the students are doing this in English and in Spanish. So, it's just a plan. I've done my research. TEA will recognize it as a dual language. So, we're happy that we're going there, that route. It all allows. And I always like to end by saying gracias and we tell our teachers, start each day happy. Thank you.
Wow. Mrs. Toscano, there's just a lot of enthusiasm going on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I need to remember that, start the day happy thing, so. All right. Any other comments, questions, no? All right, we'll move on to item D, P A S A demographic study.
Mr. Mordick?
Mr. Massingale, members of the board. District and the superintendent just wanted to make you aware of our future plans. We know we recently went out for a demographic study last spring with SDS. We got that information. Since then, there's been some new developments in the area that we're not on the demographic study. So, we started doing a little research and, and found that SDS does a process of a more of a reactive study by looking at platsumittles and not a proactive study. And so, with the help of Mr. Toscano and Ms. Cavassos and myself, we did some research and found a company I think that will better suit our needs in the future. P A S A, which is a population and survey analyst, take a different approach and a very proactive approach to a demographic study. Instead of just relying on, on platsumittles, they put boots on the ground. They interview community, community members. They interview leaders in the, leaders in the community and developers who will be making these decisions. We've been told that San Antonio is expecting a million people by twenty thirty. And a lot of that growth coming this way. And so, P A S A specializes in fast-growth districts like we have the possibility of doing. And so, also setting apart from the previous company that we use is, they look at charter school impact. They drive every street that's under development. And they don't have a standard formula throughout the district on the number of students per house. And so, they take all these factors. And they claim that the report is, is so in-depth that it should be good for two years. And not, because of the, the methods they use. They gave us a copy of a report they recently did for Willis ISD, which is expected to double in size by twenty twenty-eight. And it was a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-page report versus the fifty-seven-page report we got from SDS. And so, the plan now is to engage with P A S A in the September and have a report by November, December and help us make decisions for the future. Be happy to answer any questions? No? We're good.
All right, move on to item E, CDC local proposed revision.
Trustees, this is just your first reading of a proposed local policy revision. CDC local. What we're adding to it is for any crowdfunding fundraiser that an employee considers undertaking, they'll need to follow administrative procedures. And so, in your miscellaneous packet, you'll see a draft of some administrative procedures that we want your feedback on. We intend to bring the policy with the recommended revision as well as these administrative procedures forward for your consideration next month. When we say crowdfunding, we're talking about things like Donors Choose, Snapraise.com, We Fund For You. And it's just a, a new phenomenon in recent years. Fundraisers used to be something that staff used to request through our old-school process so that we can coordinate calendars and, and determine the appropriateness of the fundraiser to ensure that what they're asking for are not things that the district should be providing, for example. And that they were utilizing appropriate procedures for accounting for the funds they were receiving and that they were following our purchasing procedures when securing those goods and services. And that all of it was transparent, all of it was appropriate to keep both the employee out of trouble and the district. And that so we weren't overtaxing our community with fundraisers. As well as duplicating fundraisers across programs. With these online fundraisers, they're very difficult to manage. And so, we, we discovered that we needed to have an administrative procedure in place. And so, that's what we're bringing to you to consider this next month. It's very succinct. We researched several school districts. And our team, I think, came up with a fantastic draft for those procedures. If you'll read through there, you'll see they're very straightforward. It tells you exactly what you have to do. Tells employees, particularly principals and directors, who's responsible and what they need to do to approve fundraisers. And then, the procedures for conducting the fundraiser and documenting and accounting for those funds. And then, most importantly, it tells you seven prohibited practices. When fundrais, funds are raised online, it's not unusual for staff to have those funds and/or products delivered to their home, for example. That's not appropriate. And so, again, take a look at that, those procedures over the next month. We'll bring them back to you for your consideration at our next regular meeting. And then, with your approval, we'll, we'll, we'll make that the new normal across the organization.
Everybody okay? Any questions, comments? No? All right, let's move on to item F, TASB exit survey.
Yeah, so trustees, part of, a very important part of priority two is to ensure that we have a high-quality and engaged workforce. The Personnel Department had selected a strategy of creating an exit survey tool or instrument so that we can start to collect data about why employees are leaving, when they leave. So, that we can do a good job of becoming aware of the opportunities that we might have to create, provide better work conditions. Whether that's salary and benefits, whether that's training, resources, whether that's quality leadership, affirmation and praise and recognition. Whatever those opportunities are, we want to make sure that we're not missing them. And we hadn't had a, a, a really reliable system for doing that. And so, after some research, the HR department, Personnel Department has discovered that TASB provides that service. One of the challenges that we traditionally have with that is anonymity. Employees are often unwilling to be honest with us when they leave for fear of some sort of retaliation, whether that's a bad reference down the road. And we want to make sure that we're getting honest feedback with candor because we do have a desire as an organization to continue to be the definitive choice for the highest-quality talent. And when we get them here, we want to keep them here. And so, in your electronic packet is a, a sample of what the survey looks like and what some of the, the reporting capabilities are. Our initial intent, our idea was that we would provide a monthly exit survey report along with the personnel report. But what we've discovered in working with TASB is you really want to give it more time so that you have a broader range of employees and you have the likelihood that there's more than a handful of employees from the same job category. One, to maintain anonymity and not violate the integrity of that. And two, so that you got good data, so you can see patterns as opposed to one comment from one employee in one job classification, which wouldn't be very useful information for us. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention and give you an update. Our current best thinking is that we plan on providing the board an exit survey report in the fall. One in the spring and one in the summer. We believe that those are high personnel activity times as well as the, the spacing gives us a good four-month window between each of those reports. We got a good dataset. Be happy to answer any questions the board might have. We have staff from Personnel here, ready, willing and able to do a little tap dance for you.
No questions?
All right.
No? All right, we'll move on to item G, Personnel Report.
Trustees, this month's report is on page one sixty-six. Almost no activity. But of course, be happy to answer any questions, get you additional information, as is always the case, about the activity in the report this month. Just let me know.
All right. Item H, Upcoming Events.
Trustees, in your miscellaneous calendar, just going to the month of November. Several things I wanted to call your attention to. First and foremost, Election Day, November fifth. Pollings, we have polling sites in the district at Pecan Valley Harmony and at the high school on, on Election Day. We also have our annual Veterans Day ceremony in the Stan Bonowitz Center on the seventh. It's always a, a great community event as we honor veterans from our community. We also have, I believe, Mr. Massingale may have more to say about this, but we would like to provide, have Dr. Fuller, Wendy Fuller, provide the board with an update on the progress we're making with our CAST lead campus. We're getting pretty close to starting to take the recruitment efforts out to the community as we attempt to secure that first cohort of freshmen. But we're, we've done a lot of work since the last time we talked about it. So, I believe the date that Mr. Massingale is suggesting.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is, given that we're already having this meeting, see if everybody's on board, go ahead and have a special board meeting on November eleventh to, to talk about the CAST lead and get the update on CAST lead. So, everybody on board with November eleventh?
Five-thirty meeting, sir?
Five-thirty meeting, yes, sir. Meal provided?
Meal provided, yes, sir.
Mr. Mulkey, okay with November eleventh? Thank you, sir. All right, then we'll set for a special board meeting for November eleventh at five-thirty.
Dr. Fuller, you're on. All right. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is November nineteenth. And the Thanksgiving break. Wow. That's pretty quick. The week of the twenty-fourth. If you'd like any additional information, be happy to provide that for you.
No, anybody, everybody good? All right, cool. Let's move on to the meat and potatoes of the meeting. Item eight, Action Agenda. Item A, Proposals For Track Resurfacing At East Central High School. Mr. Superintendent Roland Toscano?
Yes, sir. Trustees, we brought the request for an award delivery method to you at the last regular meeting. If you'll recall, we discussed the high school track even prior to that as we had anticipated doing that work over the summer through a inter-local agreement, contract. And determined that we actually had a little more time and thought that And uh, determined that we actually had a little more time and thought that if we did it after football season uh, and use the award delivery method of competitive seal proposals, that we might get a better value. Um, and so we've done that and Mr. Morgan's gonna report uh, a summary of those tabulations and make a recommendation.
Uh, typically, we would see if we went out for bid, a better pricing. Um, in your packet should be a bid tabulation. We had five bidders, uh, ranging from three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred, all the way to two point seven million. Uh, so a wide range. Uh, these numbers came in higher than our purchasing cooperative quotes we had received in the spring. Um, and so we're doing something that is new for me, uh, making a recommendation to reject all bids. So after a review of all bids with the assistance of the district's engineer, the district recommends the board reject all proposals.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
So in the, yeah, so in the spring, Keith Moore, uh, project manager, and Suzette Ariola had engaged with some contractors who specialize in track resurfacing. Uh, those bids at the time came in cheaper than the bids we received going out for a formal process.
And that would be from some of the same vendors in our
Same vendors, yes.
Who submitted bids in this go-around.
So if, uh, if you look at uh, your next item, uh, that'll kinda clue you in on what we're trying to do. Uh, we will, if the board elects to approve rejecting all proposals, uh, we'll ask the board to approve a delivery method of going back to the inter-local agreement.
So what Mr. Morgan's suggesting is if we reject these bids and go back to the contracts that were awarded through the purchasing cooperative, then we could secure the pricing that we had in the spring prior to the summer, which is a significant cost savings for the same exact scope of work from the same exact contractor.
A better value for the district.
Yeah, better value for the district, same contractor, same um, specifications, scope of work. Um, it's just that they were awarded a contract, um, all of these, uh, many of these through purchasing cooperatives that they have to honor and we're members of those cooperatives. It's just unusual that when you go to market through competitive seal proposals that you don't get a better value than that. Uh, and we didn't. So we exercise due diligence. We're very confident that we know exactly what the best value is. And it's not by going with uh, the, any of the bids that we received through the competitive seal proposals, so.
We're, we're still engaged with our, the district engineer who will oversee the project uh, with staff members. And so we don't feel like we're getting, we're still getting a very good quality uh, product uh, for the district.
Let me ask you a question. Uh, resurfing the track without doing the field, what are we, uh, how does that work?
So So the track was under a five-year warranty and it was done, I believe, two years before the previous field was re-turfed. The turf is under an eight-year warranty and we still have over a year left of warranty. And so we didn't feel like it was in the best interest of the district to replace the turf when it was still under warranty. Um, they have methods to protect the track during construction, uh, of resurfing the, um, the field, the turf. Uh, and we'll make sure that they implement those to protect the track.
So to add to that, we had done an impact study on the field and we determined uh, that it was in playable condition with the exception of a few areas and they were able to, due to warranty, they were able to, to, to do some work on the field and recondition it. And uh, the subsequent impact study showed that the field was definitely within, say, playing conditions and that it was still um, usable uh, for the next year or two, which, you know, it's still under warranty as well. And so um, above and beyond what we're talking about here, it's a pretty significant investment and we felt like it would be uh, fiscally responsible to make sure we get the maximum life out of it, provided that it's still safe for the kids. And we had a, a pre and post impact study and um, we feel confident that it's safe for the kids. And if there are any issues in the next year with that field, it's under warranty. And then it, we'll reevaluate it at the end of this year. Um, and if we determine that it's, it's time to move forward with that, we did make certain that there is a way to protect the track that we are considering resurfacing now, that we don't damage that when we're replacing the field. Um, and so we feel pretty confident based on talking to the, those that specialize in this work, that we can do that.
The turf is still usable and in, in decent condition, the track uh, is no longer usable. And so uh, something needs to be done.
Yeah, I know something needs to be done to the track, but in force draining, uh, that one about, by resurfing that track, rather than if we were hitting back the drainage, plus the, you know.
No, sir, the drainage was, was put in place the last time we resurfaced it. So there's actually drainage that uh, surrounds the entire track.
Track, and so we have no issues with that, okay, no problem with it.
Do these people not rem, I don't know if I can talk about this, cause they're, but they're tied together. Do they not remember that they're part of a agreement? The construct, some of these are the same construction companies that you're, that are, gave us these sealed proposals are part, are companies that are active in this inter-local agreement?
So that, so they, the way the inter-locals work is they do their own bidding process. So for example, buy board. They'll put out a bid for construction of a replacement of the track and they'll, they'll submit their, their cost. And that's locked in for the, the term of that, which is typically with through buy board, five years. Um, for whatever reason, uh, when we put it out for bid, we were, and this was back in April and May, so there may have been a little cost inflation, but uh, in some cases, we saw fifty to sixty thousand dollars inflation.
So will we, uh, are y'all gonna go ahead and just uh, go ahead with it? Or will we get to see what the uh, costs were within the agreement? Does that make sense?
Um, typically, we wouldn't bring uh, uh, an inter-local contract back to the board, uh, because the board already approved.
Can you uh, speak to uh, the cost that we were considering um, with the contractor that we were utilizing or considering utilizing to the inter-local?
So, uh, if you look on the second uh, line, um, on the tabulation is Binion. Binion is um, the gold standard for tracks in this area. Uh, they've done all of the Big Twelve schools except, with the exception of West Virginia. They did U T S A, Texas A and M, they've done Northside, uh, and several other schools. They gave us a bid of three four, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in the spring going through buy board. Uh, the bid that they gave us uh, last week was three hundred and ninety-seven thousand. And so
Same contractor, same scope of work, same project.
Without, yeah, s- s- same product. They have different levels of track, but we're looking at the same product. It was, uh, we saw almost a fifty thousand dollars increase.
And then I just have one other question. Do you mind if I ask what alternate one and alternate two is in these bids?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I may have them backwards, but alternate one was to power wash the entire uh, concrete around the track in the stands. Uh, it was pretty dingy and so we wanted pricing to see what it would do, since they're doing the work, what that would cost. And then alternate two was to move the high jump pit uh, away from the track so that the mat, landing mats were further away from the running track. Give, give them a little bit more room, cause it was right there at the finish line. So there's a box that's in, that's uh, inserted into sub-layer of the tra, uh, the, the D-zone. Uh, and they were gonna move that back about ten feet to make it safer.
And so will we have these options with this inter-local uh, bid that was in the spring or will these not be available?
So the pricing may not be the same, uh, but certainly I don't think they would turn away work. But um, it's, it'll, it'll be available, yes. I don't know if it'd be guaranteed at that same price, though.
Okay, but it won't be fifty thousand dollars, right?
No. And if it is, we'll reject it.
Yeah, right.
Yes, so these are alternates only because they're, they're add-ons, not necessary. They're luxuries.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Mr. Superintendent?
Uh, trustees, I recommend the board reject all proposals received for the track resurfacing uh, at East Central High School as presented.
So we have a recommendation from the superintendent to reject all the proposals, receive proposals for track resurfacing for East Central. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Mulkey. Do I have a second? We have a second from Ms. Barrientos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item B, Construction Project Delivery Contract, Contract Award Method, Track Resurfacing At East Central High School. Mr. Descano?
Yes, sir, Mr. Morgan.
So staff recommends board consideration of approval of the construction project delivery contract award method using, utilizing a purchasing cooperative that the district has an inter-local agreement with to secure a contract for the track resurfacing at East Central High School.
Any questions?
Any questions, concern?
All right. Uh, trustees, I recommend board approval of the construction project delivery contract award method of utilizing a purchasing cooperative and securing a contract for the track resurfacing at East Central High School as previously discussed.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent. Do we have a motion? We have a motion from Ms. Barrientos. I have a second.
Second.
Second from Ms. Brazil. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Reappointment Of Directors To The East Central Foundation.
Trustees, the foundation directors run three-year terms. And we have two who are up for reappointment. And therefore, I'd like to recommend reappointment of Carlos Constantino, Senior Project Manager From L P A, and Gloria Lamascus, C P A Controller For Bill's Tractor And Equipment to three-year terms as Directors Of The East Central School Foundation, effective January one, twenty twenty.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to reappoint the directors of, to the East Central Foundation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion from Ms. Mo. Do we have a second? Have a second from Ms. Barrientos. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, Consent Agenda. Would any trustees like to pull any agenda, uh, item from the consent agenda? No?
No.
All in favor? All opposed? Consent Agenda passes.
He totally missed that.
He's having a hard time talking.
I know, poor guy.
Adjournment. Mr. Superintendent, you have anything else to say?
I, I don't have anything else.
I was trying to say your voice.
Thank you. Sir. That was very sweet of you.
Thank you. That's about the kindest thing I did today. All right. Have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second, sir.
Motion passes. We, uh, unanimous consent.